Twenty second twenty twenty five commissioners meeting. We got our Pat Kelly is going to have our opening prayer. Thanks, Pat.
Let us pray. Our gracious heavenly father, the creator of this universe. We are so thankful as we gather here in this room. And have this prayer that we can talk to the one that has created this world. And we know that each one of us are very important in your sight. We know this through your word. We're thankful that we can gather here as friends and coworkers and. Father, I would just pray that you will bless this meeting. People will come up with ideas that we can discuss. And hopefully come to a resolution that will be beneficial to the majority of the people. Father, we pray for our country. We pray for the chaos that's in the world today. We know that you are in control, even though we don't understand and we don't see it as being in control. But help us to do our part in our own little world. Be mindful of one another, be kind, be gracious, and be forgiving to one another. Bless this meeting that we may glorify you with whatever we do and whatever we say. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thanks, Pat. Uh, next up, uh. I've got courthouse renovation update. Uh, I don't have a whole lot on that. I know they're moving in. I haven't, uh, heard any complaints of anything, so I think everything's going in good. Have you heard anything, TC?
I have not.
No, I know it's probably going well.
Yep.
Grant, have you heard anything on that?
No news is.
Yeah, no news is good news, I can figure.
Yeah, I know, uh, circuit court seemed happy. Didn't have any issues moving with. Okay, as good as can be expected.
Great. Uh, meeting minutes on seven, eight of twenty twenty five. You look over those?
I did.
Okay, look for a motion approved?
Uh, so moved.
Motion by TC. I'll second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes two zero. Next up, we got Chris with the highway department. Morning, Chris.
Morning. On my notes. Um, I guess we did have a highway meeting this morning. Uh, we talked about a lot of drainage issues. In the county, uh, with ditches, uh, that aren't really on county right of way. They're going through the middle properties and fields and, and, uh, maybe not being maintained by the different property owners as they should be, creating issues to residents that are calling the highway department about them, which are again, are, they're not on county right of way and they're not roadside ditches. So we've talked about that this morning and, uh, different issues that came up. And, and with the extraordinary amount of rain that we've had, uh, this year, that's created problems for us. Put us behind schedule a little bit. So usually at the end of June, the beginning of July, we're in the tiling process, uh, tiling the new roads. And we've not started that yet. So we're still hoping to start it by the end of this month, which we got a week, but so we're a little bit behind on that. And then it puts us behind on where after we tile the roads one year, then the following year, we put the fabric and the rock down and calcium chloride it and hard surface it. So it's kind of put us behind on that as well. Usually I don't like to admit that whatever obstacles get in the way, we just keep pushing forward, but it's hard to to push forward when we get all this rain and then we spend a day or two afterwards putting the roads back together, but the rains washed the road away or, or picking the trees up that fell.
That's why I think all three commissioners was how we got started this morning is got phone calls on residents with the rain. This ditch is overflowing, getting in backing up into their, their place, their property. Not sure, not sure what the answer is yet, but, uh.
It's, it's always been an issue, but this year it's, uh, it's really heightened. So, uh, we did talk about some things and some things to look into and some responsibilities and some responses to the, uh, some of it is the residents call, they call the commissioners, uh, because they don't know what to do, what their responsibility is or what they can do. So some of it's just educating them that some of these matters, uh, where to turn to to get them, uh, fixed or look into. Uh, it might be as simple as calling the farmer and telling him to open up his ditch or get that tree out of the ditch. So, uh, talked about that. Uh, I got a purchase of a lawnmower for county highway property, not for right of way, not for, uh, MVH dollars, but to be able to get that out of the commissioner's budget out of the, uh, building and maintenance fund. It was for eighty five hundred dollars. So I needed to get the permission from you guys to be able to pay that out of your building fund.
You guys were on a borrowed one, correct? Like, like you hand me down one, if you will.
Yeah, we got one from the.
And you nursed it along just as much as you could.
Probably for around ten years or so, we got a, uh, used mower from the courthouse and it's finally. I think a couple of years ago, they were wanting us to get a new one and the guys and it finally it fell apart. The deck fell off of it, actually. We fixed it a couple of times and it's just a mess, so.
You guys got a lot there to take care of.
We got a lot to take care of and, and again, we need to you get that out of the, the building. The building front for building and maintenance is it's not to, gonna be used for right of way.
Yeah, I think. I'll look for a motion to accept lawnmower purchase.
So moved.
I'll second it. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes two zero.
Okay, and then the bridge ninety five in Raglesville, there should be a, another call coming up for it. We, we, uh, submitted a grant application last year for the call for the rehabilitation of that bridge. And we didn't get it with the restraints that are putting on the, the grants over the last couple of years with the change in the funding and NDOT and the federal government. Uh, but that call is going to be coming due again. And, uh, we chose not to participate. They give us the option to participate more dollars towards the grant that we put in for. And we'd have a better chance of getting a grant, but we got up to about a million dollars for a rehabilitation of a bridge. We had decided we didn't want to pay a million, million dollars for a rehabilitation. Uh, if we were gonna pay a million dollars, we wanted a full replacement. So that's kind of, that's gonna be coming up. Uh, I don't know the exact date. But I just wanted to get the okay from you guys to go ahead and proceed for that grant and the, the cost to the county would be, uh, about like eight hundred thousand dollars on a four million dollar bridge, uh, replacement. Uh, so it's a eighty percent, twenty percent.
Bridge again, sorry.
Uh, ninety five in Raglesville. Sound like nine seventy five north, uh, be east of Raglesville. So like I said, we got the okay from you guys one time and we pers- we went for it and we didn't get it. So I'd like to just to resubmit that application when the call comes due.
I'll make a motion to resubmit that grant when it comes due. I'll second that. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes two zero.
Bridge fourteen, which is the bridge over Colbert Ditch on old US fifty. That one was due to be opened on, I wrote the date down, seven twenty eight. But with all the rain and everything, I don't think we're gonna be able to open it. I got pictures. What day ever it rained last week. I mean, there's like four inches in ten minutes. Uh, so we haven't been able to do all the bridge work underneath it, uh, cause the creek's been flooded. So we're looking just to extend that for ten days, just right off the bat and see where that gets us if we can get caught up. But it's been hard to get the work done because the, the creek's been flooded. So that if you guys are getting asked, it was supposed to be open at the end of the month. It's probably at least gonna be into, into August, uh, before it gets open. I'll give you what's raining, gets dry, I'll give you a, a updated timeframe, but I know to extend it. Every day that the bridge is not open past its expected opening, there's should be a penalty to the construction company, but under these circumstances, I would think that we would just waive the penalty because there was nothing that they could do and give them an extension for ten days. And see where we land there, because this is out of their control and everybody's else's control, so.
I will for motion to extend it for ten days.
So moved.
All in favor say aye. Motion passes two zero.
Road was that again?
It was the. The old US fifty.
Old fifty, yeah. The relinquishment road. We did have a request, uh, from the airport about doing a project there, doing some paving. And it's just, it's not a taxiway. It's just around some of their buildings, uh, where they've still got gravel. Me and Rich went out there and looked at it with, uh, Erica. And she showed us what they would like to do. There's some areas that just got gravelled by the hanger right out by, behind the airport. Uh, it wouldn't be a real hard job to do. Uh, they would have, the airport would have to pay for the labor and the equi- or the labor and the material. And I guess the commissioners typically could donate the use of the equipment. If you guys fu- you guys fund the airport partially. So if it works out in our schedule and we don't have anything to do and they agree to the terms of paying it. There's two different options that we could give her to, to pave. I can't remember how many square feet it was. Remember? I brought him just because of that reason. I thought he would remember, but it's like, uh, fifty one thousand dollars and, and forty one thousand dollars of two options. You don't have to make a motion on it, but I should have let you guys know that already. And I'll talk to Erica and see what they think. And if they wanted to proceed with one and you guys think it's feasible for us to do it, that's, that's what it is. I do have a, I do have a map with it somewhere in this mess. I just grabbed a bunch of papers this morning.
Not something that has to be done immediately, but something that you're willing to do.
Right. It doesn't have to, it's close to there. We're actually pa- we're planning on paving that road in front of the airport. Some of our CCMG funds are going on seventy five east and two fifty north. Some of it's going on two hundred north. So we're paving both sides of the airport, the west side and the south side. And then there's a loop in between there. Uh, we were gonna be there with our crew paving it this year anyways is our plans. So while we was there, it made, it didn't make a, make a too big of a deal to go do it. I think it is. I don't know. I don't see the square feet. Yeah, there's, it's like, uh, eleven thousand seven hundred sixty seven square feet is what they're asking for us to do. So, uh, just to let you guys be aware of that.
Chris, you're aware of this, but the, the amount that, um, we can self perform has gone up. Um, and I know this is well below the threshold, but, um, just be mindful that there's a larger dollar threshold that we can self perform this year versus the past. But just, anytime we're doing this, I just want to keep that in.
Keep that, was it two, is it two hundred and fifty or?
I think it's three fifty.
Three fifty? Okay, um, yeah, I mean, we don't, there's some years we don't have time to do it. I don't even know if we'll have time to do it, but, uh,
Kind of already behind already, so.
Yeah, we're already behind, but I feel like it was at least my job to bring it up to you guys and let you know that they were requesting that. And then the conversations can continue and if it works out, we can do it and that's what the cost would be. Uh, and it depends on their timeframe. If they're willing to wait or, or not wait. Uh, this, it was nothing that would be like, uh, I think the council asked me one time about doing the taxiway and the runway and we can't, we can't touch a taxiway and we can't touch a runway. Them are regulated by, uh, bigger, bigger entities than we are. Uh, and then the four H parking lot area, uh, there was a little bit of a request for that when we did the, a couple of years ago, we did the top parking lot and the lower parking lot. And then we connected the two parking lots together, uh, by a gravel, little gravel lane. They wanted it paved at the time and we were willing to do it. Uh, but we didn't do it because it was a brand new road and if we had paved it, it just fell apart. So now that they, I told them once they got their, their new building done, we could repetition the commissioners. Which the commissioners, the EDC and the city all paid like forty grand apiece to do the parking lots and materials and the commissioners donated the, the rest of the stuff. So we would have that little run around road to do. Uh, they are also asking about paving right up to the four H building. Uh, but I think that that probably needs to go in, uh, a different area. Our equipment's too big to, to do that, uh, finesse work. That probably should go in with the construction of the building. We never, never agreed to do that part. Uh, but we did agree to do that run around road, so, uh, I don't have no dollar figures on what it would cost, but bring that up to you and I'll talk to the, to the four H grounds board and see if they're wanting us to do that or what. So I just wanted to bring them things up to you and I think that's all I've got besides the LPA voucher.
All right, appreciate it, Chris.
So the LPA vouchers, uh, bridge over Colbert Ditch, old US Highway fifty, that's to the Lockmiller Group. And it's basically eighty percent reimbursement, getting them, getting them to pay it.
I'll make a motion to move forward on the LPA vouchers and the reimbursement.
By TC, I'll second it. Uh, the all, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes two zero.
Thanks, Chris.
Next we got Bob, three. How you doing this morning?
Hey, good morning, everyone. Doing good?
Got an update for us.
Always great to be here and share a little bit. Got some handouts.
All along.
Thank you, sir.
All right, so. This is a, kind of a similar format from, um, last time I was here and some of the items are, are, are holdovers, but, uh, I'll just walk through some of the highlights. And, uh, as always, you know, if there's anything that you see here or otherwise, call, drop in, all that. So we continue to re- respond to requests for information, RFIs from Indiana Economic Development Corporation. And the six months sort of tracking of that is the colored spreadsheet handout that's also in your folder. We continue to talk with, uh, MNC Tech and debating whether or not we wanted to, um, look at a visit, uh, to their parent companies, uh, in concert with a longstanding event, the US Midwest Japan Conference this year. The Shell Building, we hope to have, uh, information soon to be able to release on that. So, so stay tuned. Was up at Chicago with Radius Indiana and in Savannah with Hoosier Energy, meeting with site selectors and corporate real estate, um, folks. You all realize this, uh, Mantum's having a groundbreaking in August. That's really exciting project. Huge capital investment for that, uh, combined radiation environments project. There's a, uh, exit seventy six, Odin, Illinois. Gas station project, I think the developer's getting his traffic study back. And I think it's gonna be, you know, there's recommendations in that and, um, gonna have to talk to NDOT about what exactly he'll have to do, uh, to accommodate traffic movements into a, a new gas station like that. And, and we try to coordinate that with Jody at the school to make sure we're all up to date on that.
She came in a few months ago and she's comfortable with, I mean, y- you all have been regularly interacting, I, I.
Yes, yeah, yeah, she's great. The other truck stop, uh, at fifty exit near Antioch, um, really haven't heard much new there. That too has a lot of challenges from access, um, sewer, et cetera. So we, we keep monitoring that. Continue to look at the Tocum site there in Washington. It, it holds a lot of promise, but it, it, it again has challenges as a brownfield site. I mentioned Oz and M- NTMZ. This is opportunity zone and new market tax credits. Um, I'm gonna talk about this later, but they, uh, could be a source of funding for a challenging project like that in a, in, in that area. We're looking at the value of a virtual shell building program. I don't think anybody's got the appetite to jump into a new shell building. Uh, project or another one. Uh, but the virtual one is simply being able to convince an interested party. You've taken all the risk out. You've done all the design work permitting, et cetera, and it's, it just gives them confidence in the land and, and property we're showing them. Worked with IU faculty and students to develop strategies to market the empty storefronts downtown. And, uh, kind of interesting, we, we may get, uh, IU president Pamela Witten to, to visit and see some of the successes on Main Street and, and other things here in the community. That would be the twenty eighth. We haven't confirmed yet, but if we do, we'll share that. Continue to unwind the, uh, new market tax credit project for Eagle Rail and I mentioned here about, back to those new market tax credits, the, the big beautiful bill. Has sort of institutionalized a new market tax credit and opportunity zones. Both those programs were, could have been, uh, zeroed out or, or, um, deleted from the treasury programming, but they've agreed to let them in sort of indefinitely. And under the right circumstances, it can be an effective way to raise capital for a, a project. And then the, before I leave that topic, on the back pages, back two pages, I've got two maps that show the, the boundaries of the new market tax credit and the opportunity zone eligible areas. Radius, I'll send this, we just got this. They're hosting a lunch and learn event on September nine at French Lick on, uh, tax abatement. So I think I sent it to Maryland, the council, since they typically address those, but we'll try to circulate that in a greater, uh, circle if anyone else wants to attend. It's designed for government officials. Intention expansion. Again, we continue to, to meet with businesses. It's been a little slower over the summer trying to make appointments. I think this is new. We're hosting a trusted advisory event on September four. The idea here, so many resources available to, to people starting and operating businesses. But we want to get in front of the accountants and bankers and attorneys and whatnot who interact with businesses and may try to make them aware in a very efficient fashion, you know, kind of, kind of over a quick lunch. Here are these individuals, here's these programs. Call us if you got questions, but again, we, we want to create awareness of this really big portfolio of, of resources. On the Thursday, December eighteen, Sep- September eighteen, we're working with Farm Bureau to hold, uh, two virtual business succession planning events, ten and three that day. And, uh, this is something that's coming to light in, in a lot of places as the baby boomers are aging out. You don't want to, uh, leave to chance how these businesses are transitioned. And we're learning that the sooner as a business you start thinking about your transition, the, the better positioned you are to lessen your tax liability, you know, set up a, a favorable deal. So we want to just cre- uh, having a program to create awareness about that. We're also meeting soon to sort of reboot the Davis County revolving loan fund. That's meant for deals that aren't bankable and give people an opportunity to find some capital there. Uh, with infrastructure, Montgomery's still, you know, looking at their sewer project and we're working with them to see about modeling out some housing developments and how that might. If they build it, what those new rate payers might, might mean to the equation. Working with the airport, I think we've got, Stars are aligning where they may purchase the hanger. So that's wonderful. And we're looking at the money bank behind our building and creating, uh, some additional parking, additional parking. You know, downtown's always, parking's a, an issue and so we're looking at that and. Workforce, uh, we continue to host that monthly, uh, HR roundtable. This, this past week, we had work won there and it had great attendance with folks wanting to learn all about their resources. We're hosting two training events with Purdue's Manufacturing Extension Partnership. That's the Purdue University. But those programs are di- digital literacy and, and AI for spreadsheets. And the digi- digital literacy, kind of a fancy name, but it, it's about folks that advance in a company and may not be completely, uh, comfortable around computers and computer applications. So this kind of helps them get more comfortable with, with all the technology. Talking with VU and hope to, to find some opportunities there to engage them. Here's a long list of companies that, uh, have in, received employer training grants. We, we can't, they can't disclose the amount to us, but we're always happy to see our local companies availing themselves to these kind of resources. And lastly on workforce, uh, yesterday, Darren Thomas, he's the recruiter for C- C triple A Crane. Noted they're reaching a critical point in staffing their operations, so we're gonna meet with him. He's got some ideas how we might be able to help with, uh, creating awareness of these positions. Regional workforce, kind of covered that. See workforce, um, really nothing new there. We continue to host our coding IT academy. Workforce attraction. And Make My Move program is still there. That's sort of a, uh, cash incentive for people to take a job here and, and move here. That had a threshold of fifty thousand dollars and the money wasn't being used as much. We got feedback from industry that that threshold might be a little much, so they backed it down to forty thousand annual earnings. And then they took away a little bit of the, uh, it's typically five thousand, I think, moved it to four. Just adjusted it for, for people that aren't at that fifty.
Who do they come to see? Like, if we have people who are moving in, we know that.
Yeah.
Coming back, uh, who, who, they talk to you guys?
Jill in our shop is a, is a primary and then, and then we co- coordinate all that with Radius who actually holds the fund.
Gotcha.
Yeah. And ROI, another partner. They're going to be helping us with updating this quality of life and workforce attraction plan. This was done in twenty nineteen. So they've decided that it's time to revisit that, so they'll be doing that. And the next bullet down here on page five is there, uh, also this ready program has a certain pot of funding from Lilly, uh, to fund arts and cultural projects. So to be eligible for that, the state said, if you want to apply for that, you gotta go through an arts and cultural, kind of put together a regional plan. So that's something else that, uh, we have, may have a role in trying to coordinate and get people involved in formulating those, the quality of life and the arts. So I think that's, those are the highlights, um. I'd like to share this morning.
Well, Bob, we appreciate it. It's always great to hear what all's going on in the county. I enjoy these quarterly updates. Davis County seems to be busy doing a lot of things, a lot of things in the works.
Indeed. And like Holler if you got any questions.
Hey, what do you think, uh, economic development? What's your biggest obstacle in Davis County? One of them.
Well, one of them that we see, you know, is the, um, timing, the way, uh, you know, city of Washington, I sixty nine, you know, it's, it's well positioned to be our, is our growth center. And, uh, they're doing all they can to move forward with the sewer system, but it, we're bumping up against the capacity and we're, I'm not sure where we're at, but it, that would be really disappointing if we reach a point.
Right.
And I know the mayor's doing all he can to squeeze more capacity out of what's there, uh, until they get their new plant done. Um, and of course workforce is always a, a thing, just finding people and.
Yeah, so EDC, you guys, you guys focus on workforce attraction, right? That's one thing. Are, are you, are you focusing also on, um, helping train workforce a little?
Yeah, we're always reaching out. Like I said, that long list of companies, those are folks that, you know, we've engaged or sent out information about training programs. They can avail themselves to that. So we don't really do the training.
Right.
Well, we are piloting the one with Purdue MEP. So, and that was the idea there is to get people like, hey, Purdue does this. You can have this too. You, you can buy it on your own. So we're trying to create awareness and participation. So we're trying to create awareness and participation.
But yeah, trying to help businesses find ways to train, you guys aren't necessarily focusing on training people, is that right?
No, we don't have any.
I wanted to thank you, you gave very helpful comments regarding the Westgate contracts, I was looking at it this morning, I was like, this is good, let me send Bob to law school. Seriously, it was helpful, so thank you.
Okay, very good.
Thanks, Bob. Next, we got the Health Department. Here, Kathy, yeah, she's got some AED guidance.
Looking for guidance.
Looking for guidance.
Looking for.
We all are.
So if you don't know, this is the AED, we have lots of them, our AED program started in nineteen ninety nine with the previous public health nurse. And we've been able to sustain it over the years with grants and special projects from the companies. But now we are out of grants, we're out of special projects and as you know, our budget next year has been cut drastically, so. Trying to find guidance to keep the AED program alive, currently, we help. We supply AEDs to all county buildings, so the Highway Department, the Sheriff's Department, the courthouses, the annex, the landfill. And we do the CPR, we maintain the pads and batteries, usually the pads and batteries last four years unless you use them, like the Sheriff's Department uses theirs a lot. They have over forty AEDs, they have one in every vehicle and then a few extras. So when they use it, they bring it to us, we change the batteries, update the pads, and then we also download the information that's stored on there so they can use it for training and also legal. If anything would ever come from that, so we are able to have that relationship, however. Now that our funds are cut and all resources have dried up, we're looking at ways to keep it going, we are not able to purchase the pads and batteries anymore. And the pads run anywhere from the whole, the pads and batteries are about four to five hundred dollars to replace. If you go to a little cheaper version, you could do it for like three hundred dollars. So what we were wondering, there's a couple of options, is that, let's say the Sheriff's Department uses one, they bring it to us, we still service it, replace the pads, the batteries. And then we would send them the bill. Same thing with the Highway Department, every four years, if they don't use them, the pads and the batteries have to be replaced and then whoever owns, the department that owns that AED. Would be responsible for paying that bill. For most departments, it wouldn't be a problem, but it would be a problem for Gary's Department because they use theirs. So I don't know budget wise what we're looking at, the other option is. We purchase them and then they pay the Health Department and that gets really messy when money is coming into the Health Department, that's not. You know, I mean, it gets a little messy for the auditor and for me for tracking who paid and when, so I'm just looking for guidance on the best way to move forward. AEDs do save lives, there's four people that are still alive today because AED was used, we have them in the schools, the schools will now pay for their own supplies and batteries. Fire departments, sporting events all have them, there's a hundred and thirty-three over the last twenty, thirty years that we've put in. And so notices went out to all of the non-county. Departments that they're going to be responsible for those started in January, we do have funding this year to finish it up, but want to give everybody a. Several months heads up so they know the transition over into, we still would like to service the AEDs and help them make sure they're working properly, but we will no longer be able to pay for the pads and the batteries. So that's my guidance today, I'm seeking is, do we continue to do that through the Health Department and then. Work it through the Health Department or just send the bills to the department, so it'd be the Highway Department, the Sheriff's Department, landfill, and then the. Annex building and the courthouse.
We've only got three, we could take.
Take care of yours.
How many do you guys have?
They got forty-eight.
A lot?
She said, yeah, forty-eight.
Forty, forty-eight.
So we have three in this building, the landfill has one.
Right. How many, how many times do they use theirs in a year about, you know?
It varies, they use them a lot, they just don't shock. I don't know.
I mean, are you replacing every forty-eight every year or?
No. Yeah.
I'm sure, yeah. Yeah, I think that's a great odder question, obviously, because they're going to have to be the one to to track and pay all this, right, so. We need to make sure, talk with Jen whenever she gets back.
We currently do have a line item for AEDs, it just has no money in it after January, so.
Right, right. And see what the easiest way is to go about that, obviously, if you guys don't have the money to do it, you can't do it, right, and so. That's what I would propose.
I'd go to each department and then if it's, see that it's not going to work out, and obviously be the Sheriff's Department that uses the most, and we'll just have to adjust and, you know. We want them out there, obviously, hopefully we never have to use them, but we have to. Hopefully none of the departments will quit using them, you know, because they can't afford them or whatever, but.
Would you be able to to send us an email on how many times like in the past?
Yeah, I can.
Three to five years at the Sheriff's Department of using them, just so we get an idea of the cost.
Okay, we'll do.
Is that all you need?
Yes, good guidance, yes.
Yeah, yeah, when Jen gets back, we'll talk with her and see what we can do.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thanks Kathy. Next, we got Amber. Good morning, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. Our time of senior is dwindling down, isn't it? Congratulations to your husband, by the way.
Thank you, I'm sad, but you're all right. So I'm here for a few things, first is the feasibility study planning grant, so as you guys know. We are hoping to proceed with a feasibility study pretty quickly, next on the agenda. But just a couple of weeks ago, I received an email from OCPA stating that they're announcing a new planning grant and feasibility studies are part of those grants. It is up to twenty thousand dollars, initially I had it marked as reimbursable, but it's actually upfront dollars. But I do think in our case, we're moving pretty quickly on our feasibility study that it would probably be reimbursable for us if we get the grant. So it just seemed like a good timing thing, good.
Do you know that for sure?
Yes.
Because I would hate to, I would hate to do it thinking we can get reimbursement and not, you pointed to somebody, sorry.
Yeah, Johnny's here in the audience, he's with OCPA. So he actually answered my call and answered my questions on that, but yes, he told me it is upfront, but we do have the sixty thousand for the feasibility study and. And planning and in our budget already, so even if we don't get the grant recovered, but this is just if we get it, then that's twenty thousand dollars that we're not having to pay for.
Yeah, we can, we can use that in other places, that would be great, yeah.
So the thing about these grants is that it has to be written by the county and then we have to be like the secondary recipient of that, so I don't. I don't know traditionally how that's worked for Davies County, if we have a grant writer on staff that does that, or if you want me to write it. And then you guys read over it and approve it at that point.
That's typically how that, yes.
Okay, wonderful.
Yeah, come on up.
If you don't mind, thank you.
Yeah, if you don't mind. Thanks for being here, by the way. I understand.
Okay. The, the grant writers, I don't know whether your county has had any CBDG grants. In the recent past. If so, then you already have a relationship with the grant administrator. That's the person who does the writing of the grant. So and it's only, we only accept the grant applications that are written by certified grant administrators.
So for us, that would be Greg Jones.
Okay. Correct.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions on that?
And then you're, you're, you're pretty positive that the reimbursement could happen if passed, right?
Mm-hmm.
Good. Perfect.
The cost of the county would be.
For the, for Greg Jones, yeah.
And there's a, and there's a, an eight percent local.
Match.
Match that goes along with it, so that would amount to sixteen hundred dollars.
Out of the twenty grand, that's eighteen four, right?
Yeah, and we're covering the other forty thousand of the grant, or of the plan anyways.
Out of the Visitors Commission, yeah. Perfect, yeah. Appreciate that, thank you.
Any other questions?
Um, not on that, I think we, I think perfectly fine with moving forward with Greg on that and you working with Greg to get that accomplished, yeah.
Thank you. All right, number two is the feasibility study itself, so the Tourism Commission has.
We gotta, we have to make a motion.
And then we are gonna, we do want a motion on Kathy's request to table that for the time being.
Okay, first I'll make the motion on Kathy's request to table that until we can talk with Jen.
Motion by Commissioner Cook to table the guidance on the AED. I'll second that, those in favor say aye.
Aye. And then I'll make a.
Motion passes two zero, sorry.
And then I'll make a motion on moving forward on the feasibility study grant. And having, working with Greg Jones on that to get that written and submitted.
Motion by TC on the feasibility study, I'll second it, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes two zero.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
So yeah, the next step for us is the feasibility study itself, so the Tourism Commission has voted to move forward with a contract with Hunden. They are well known in the study world and we feel that by partnering with them that we can leverage their contacts to hopefully. Entice some developers as part two, once this study is complete.
Can you remind everybody what they're actually looking into?
Yes, so we've kind of left it open, we've heard so many different versions of what the study could be, whether it's an event center, a culture center, a sports center, all these different things. So we've asked them to look at the different models and to see what would be the best fit for us.
But particularly like a, a building, a center of some sort, right, whether what's attached to it or what's going to go into, it's what they're actually. Studying on what we can. Maintain also what, people that would come and all that stuff, right?
That's right, that's right, market analysis, all of that stuff, it'll be within Davies County, so we're not saying that it has to be in Washington or Odin or Montgomery. We're going to kind of let them guide us where they think the best space for this would be, we have given them some, some spots to start with, but that's, you know, we hope that they give us, you know, what their advice would be.
And when are you guys planning on bringing in like us, council? Obviously Economic Development, I'm guessing you guys have worked, worked close with this already, and Chamber, when are you guys willing to bring all those in, when is that time?
Pretty early on, so they are partnering with HWC, which is the people that, the firm that worked on the revitalization, revitalization plan of downtown Washington last year. And they are doing the engagement piece of that, which would bring you guys in early on to discuss what is it that we collectively want to see this to be, because depending on who you talk to, it's different every day. So it, very early on, y'all, y'all would be part of the first step.
You have a timeframe about, is that fall?
Three months.
So about three months, we'll start moving forward on those things?
Well, three months until the study's complete, is what I mean.
Oh, yeah, but as far as moving forward on getting the study going, timeframe on that?
Very, like tomorrow, pretty quick.
Okay, timeframe on us coming in then?
Um, I don't have a date on that, they would have to schedule that once, once the contract is signed.
Grant, do you have any, did you have questions on the contract?
Yeah, I just had, so, and I don't know if the gentleman from Hunden, I was looking at this from yesterday, looks like there's some changes that they've already agreed to. So this is a little bit different than what, what they said here.
Yes, that was just yesterday evening, yeah.
But that's fine, and that's what I was looking at, just to make sure that we lined up the language, so if you're wanting to proceed with this, if you don't mind. Just subject to acceptable language.
Absolutely.
Is that okay?
Yeah, and you're good with what I sent to you?
Uh, I haven't, I haven't thought through if it's, it's better.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I'd, I'd make a motion to proceed with the feasibility study, subject to approvable language.
Motion by TC, I will second it, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes two zero.
All right, last.
We will hold off on actually signing the document if that's okay.
Yeah, that's fine, I'll wait to hear.
Work it out with Hunden.
Yeah. Placer AI contract, so Placer AI is a data tool that is used to track people from where they come from and where they go to. Before, after events, after a night of stay, it could just be that they're, they're passing through town, but we can kind of track where they're coming from and where they're going to. For Placer AI, this past year, it was contracted with the Chamber of Commerce, they've opted to not proceed with that contract. And have asked us to take on that, that contract, so it is a little bit more than we had originally budgeted, we had budgeted ten thousand to contract with the Visitors Bureau, it is sixteen thousand five hundred. A little bit more, we've talked to Bob at EDC and he's agreed to help that, those additional funds, but today I'm just here to request permission to sign that contract as well.
How, how do they keep track of them people?
Yeah, so phones, every time you get an app, it asks you, and then this is like a game or whatever, it asks.
Ask you your location.
Right, and location, so that's their main way, I'm sure there's other different things, but that is their biggest route, is you have to have a cell phone. And you have to have something on there that is watching where you go, those places then sell that data, they buy the data and then we use it, it doesn't tell names of people. Because that's illegal and, but it does tell like areas and how many, how many people, so. With that data, you can also then. Compile it and ask it basically like what would be the best restaurant that Davies County would be suitable for and then for a developer or whatever, they can go out and. Try to find that restaurant, bring it in, that type of thing, right, so very, very useful. My question would be, are you guys, when, if a business or somebody comes in and asks for this and asks for data, are you giving that data, are you looking at tiers and selling some of that? To try to recoup some of the cost of that? Again, I'm not saying you have to charge ten grand for a study, that would be dumb, right, but is there a model, are you guys talking about that model to try to do some of that?
So we will not sell any of the data first, I think that's prohibitive of the contract, but secondly, we cannot take in any income as the Visitors Bureau, we don't receive any funds other than in keepers. And this contract would be with Visitors.
Well, the Visitors Commission.
Or, or that, we cannot.
Doesn't, can't receive any funds.
Not receive funds, so we will not be, it will not be, there will not be a fee associated with it, there may be.
Did EDC receive funds?
True, but they will not be in contract.
I know, that's what I'm saying, is what's the best route to put this contract?
To contract with EDC would be like twenty thousand dollars plus, the fee goes up depending on who their partner is, Chamber of Commerce was based off of membership rates. Visitors Bureau is based off of overnight stays and EDC is a totally different realm and they charge a lot more.
I was in the negotiation with the Chamber, we actually negotiated that down, it wasn't necessarily based off membership.
Right.
So you know?
Yeah, and I negotiated ours down.
So you can negotiate that down, is what I'm getting at?
I negotiated ours down as well.
Sure, and so, but I'm saying if they could actually. Use that, get the fees instead of doing it for free and then it'd be a cost in the drain on taxpayer dollars, right, because that's what Visitors Commission is bringing in. And then contracting with the Visitors Bureau, that might be the better route. See what I'm getting at?
See what you're getting at, I disagree, but that's fine.
Why do you disagree?
Because you're already, the taxpayers are already paying the dollars and the reports that I give out would be to organizations that are holding these events.
You can go, whose taxpayers are bringing, whose taxpayers are paying the dollars, it's not our community, it's people staying in our hotels.
Exactly.
So there's, so the people who are living here need that, right, they're not actually paying that dollars, see what I'm getting at? So to me, it makes sense not to keep draining taxpayer funds, makes sense to use it to actually try to bring in some income, offset the cost.
When we track these events, when we ask the organizations, you know, what, how many people are you bringing in every year, businesses, what are you bringing in, a lot of them cannot tell you their numbers.
Correct.
Have no way of tracking.
Correct.
So this is giving them some support in that and telling them, okay, here's what you're, you know, if, for the Davies County Fair, we pulled that report. They had actually less people come this year than last year, so it tells them, you know, what did you change this year, what areas do you need to improve upon? And whereas before we were giving out grants for these events and now, and we were asking, okay, how many people are coming, they didn't have that data to give, so now we can help supply that.
Yeah, and I'm not necessarily saying we charge our, our citizens, I'm saying for developers and contractors coming in, looking at things, we have that as an offer, but you can't do that in your, in your area, but they can't.
They, that would be up to them, yeah.
And I'd have to look into if the Visitors Bureau can't or cannot, that seems interesting to me. That you couldn't charge, I don't, I get Visitors Commission, a hundred percent know that, but a Visitors Bureau who's contracted, right, and so your name is just Visitors. And so your name is just Visitors Bureau.
Right.
It's not actually attached to anything, you're just contracted, right? Uh, it would seem like you can actually do that.
We're, we're no physical entity, and we have no bank account.
Well, you, Visitors Bureau should be a physical entity and have a bank account. Right? Visitors Commission cannot.
I mean, it varies from county to county. Our county has opted to not let that be the case.
Said who?
You, the commissioners.
No, the commi, the commission, not the Visitors Bureau.
In the ordinance.
The commission, not the Visitors Bureau, two different things.
In the ordinance.
So we gotta, we gotta look at that. Grant, can we look at that?
We can look at that. Um, what are you guys thinking on this contract? Is this something that you want to move ahead today? Do you want to wait and see? I think they also were asked if they can make a few changes, just so it's not auto renewal, um.
I, I would like to wait just to the next meeting, um, because we can figure out some of those details and then actually get a, uh, an idea on a structure if we want to charge, uh, for some of this use or not, and then who can charge, right? Um, that would be the key, cause if we can charge to get back, so that way we're not just completely draining all the time, uh, that would be a, a bigger asset in my opinion, because this data is very, very worthwhile. I mean, it's big, it's big time. Um, and then if we decide to charge everybody, if we decide just to charge outside, into whatever, right? Um, but at least look into that.
A motion to table this?
Motion to table. On the, on the Placer AI contract.
Motion by T, by Commissioner Cook, uh, to table the Placer AI contract. I will second that. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes two zero.
Thanks.
Thank you, Amber. Next up, we have got the bicentennial bison. Think every county in Indiana had got a bison that was donated by the, by the governor, by the.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was by the governor.
Yeah.
And, uh, ours has been stored in the basement of courthouse.
Sad story.
Yeah, and, um, I think we decided to pass it on to the Visitors Bureau, and you're gonna, you have some rough plans for it or ideas, if you want to talk just for, just for a minute, I mean, just, I know you've already been up there for.
Yeah, so I have already put together a bison committee, um, just did a call out on social media, had a lot of people, um, excited about seeing this, and what we're gonna do is make a scavenger hunt out of it. We're gonna move it around the county twice a year. Um, the first location I cannot disclose because it's part of the fun. Um, but if you find it first, take a picture of it, post it on social media, um, then you get a little prize, like a little t-shirt or something. So, um, yeah, that's kind of the plan.
No, I think that's great, that's, uh, I've seen them displayed around some other counties, you know, I think it's really neat, um, it's kind of a, we need to get it out of our way right now till we figure, figure out what else to do.
Yeah, and we got it, we might as well display it, right?
Yeah, yeah, display it, absolutely.
Well, it's public art.
You want it in your house, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just, just a correction. Bison was actually purchased by, by the state, purchased it. Washington bicentennial.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha.
Didn't have any place to put it in.
Right.
So had we.
Kind of commandeered it, is what you're saying.
Did we ever display it anywhere? We displayed it during that event.
Okay. Okay, yeah, and so you guys, being a spokesperson for them, you would love to see it used, is that what you're saying?
We would love to see it, yes.
Yes, okay, that sounds fair.
But I just wanted to.
Thank you, yeah. I, I think it's great, I think it's awesome, um, get it out there, I think it's fun, and you guys are doing something like that with it. Uh, maybe get some businesses involved, right? Restaurants, hey, if you, if they find it, they get a gift card or something, that'd be fan, fantastic. And, um.
Motion two.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to allow the Visitors Bureau, right, to, uh, use that and to, uh, place it, um, anywhere in the county and with your blessing, is that fair? Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Motion from Commissioner Cook to, for the Visitors Bureau to take care of the bison.
Yes.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye. I'm guessing you seconded, right?
I, I second that, yeah. Favor say aye. Motion passes two zero.
Thank you guys for coming up on the plan for that.
Next, we got, uh, health insurance. Paul, Paul still here, did he leave us?
Paul's like, wow, that was really interesting, as a Davis County resident, I didn't realize you guys had so much going on around here. That's, that's great that, I do thanks here in Washington, you know, and so anyway, glad to hear.
Thank you, sir. Oh.
That's the, that's the meanest thing you've ever said to me.
Okay, I'm gonna skip to the, go to the second page, where it talks about current health contracts. And so we'll flip back, but the story is, our current health contracts include Paul Williams, which I'll agree. Obviously, uh, then we had a back office with MJ, we got a current contract with UMR, a current contract with Berkshire Hathaway as a stop-loss carrier, and a current contract with TRX. So my conversation today is to eliminate MJ for the back office support, and here's the reason why, if you flip back to the first page now. So as you can see, when I started out, I was just Hoosier, um, by myself, by myself, a small little agency. And so as time went on and, and things got complicated, I hired MJ to help me on the backroom support, to handle the, the areas that we could not support as a small agency. We recently, a couple years ago, sold to a company called Aquisher. And Aquisher is a very, very large company. So as part of Aquisher, and go down to now, you can see where, um, Aqui, as Aquisher, we can do the backroom support for a much lesser cost. And I would like to work with Aquisher, since we're part of Aquisher. I mean, I'm an agent with Aquisher, and I'd like to use Aquisher's backroom support. Um, we can save the county close to fifty thousand dollars in fixed cost. MJ's a good company, no question about it, I enjoyed working with them, I think they did a good job. They're a third-party benefit administrator. Aquisher's a third-party benefit administrator. So being part of Aquisher, I would like to use my own company for the backroom support. And by doing that, and that's the only change we're recommending at this point. I mean, we're keeping UMR, we're keeping Berkshire Hathaway's, talking about TRX, and of course I'd like to keep Paul Williams. Um, so I, by making that change, and I put a propaganda in here, and there's about six pages of propaganda that shows just how big Aquisher is. They can do everything MJ can, uh, and actually, I think they provide a few more services, but they're part of my team, and that's just why I'm asking, let me work with my team as opposed to MJ team. Again, MJ did a fine job, but I think was saving fifty thousand dollars.
And you've worked with Aquisher for a few years?
About three years now.
About three years now.
Yeah, and, you know, great company, uh, enjoy the people that are on the EB benefit side, know them, you know, personally, and would like to work with them for the county, and I think we can provide a lot of good benefits at a substantial savings.
Yeah.
And that's a truce of substantial savings. I mean, your monthly bill is gonna be reduced by over four thousand dollars.
Possibly, right? So, and what I mean by that is, is somebody's gotta make money, right? So are they passing that on to the PVM, and then the PVM then turns around and charges it? And that's where I haven't quite, I made some phone calls last night, but I haven't quite got the full answer to all that yet, uh, and.
So, look at now.
Sure.
MJ is charging thirty five dollars.
Correct.
And if you look down, proposed change, Aquisher's gonna make money, but they're willing to do it at fourteen dollars.
Yeah, I get that, but are they willing to do it at the fourteen to pass on the rest of the PVM? Is what I'm getting at. Are you know that one hundred percent for sure?
I'm standing here and telling you one hundred percent.
Right.
I know that.
Okay.
It's strictly a per-employee charge, and they're doing it at a much lesser cost because of just being part of our organization.
Right, and so what I was trying to find last night was calling other, um, brokers, other people, saying, hey, what's your, what's your rate? Uh, because if they're right around that MJ rate, then something is getting charged somewhere at the, right? That's how I'm trying to figure that out, right? Um, because they're, they're not gonna be the only ones on the block just charging fourteen bucks if it's the market rate, right? Um, and if, if the market rate is thirty-five or thirty, um, and they're charging fourteen, they're passing it on somewhere to get that money back. I mean, there's no, that's how, that's how the game works, right?
Right.
Um, and so that's what I'm trying to work on. I haven't had enough time because I was gone, and that's my fault, not your fault, cause you were, you were calling, trying to get ahold, right? So it's not your fault, um, but it's mine, cause I was out of town. And so for me, for this, and, and thanks for the work you put in on that, cause I'm sure you were on the phone and you were getting all this and you were putting all this together.
And let me be clear, one quick thing is, I'm not making anything less or more by making a switch, okay? I have a charge in there, and you see it in there, and my charge is the same, whether with MJ or whether with Aquisher.
Sure, absolutely.
I have no personal benefit, other than I was trying to help save the county those fifty thousand dollars.
Right, um, and I just want to make sure that it's, it's a hundred percent true saving, it's not gonna get picked up somewhere else, right? And we make a change for, for nothing, right?
And I can sit here and tell you one hundred percent that there is no other fees being passed on by Aquisher to make up that charge.
Not to us, I know, I'm getting that, I'm wondering if it's the PVM though. And then the PVM then will decide if they're going to pass that on to us, which typically they would.
Which that's gonna be a discussion in a few pages, but this is where I'm at right now, then we'll talk about the PVM. But again, I make no additional compensation by doing this. I just would like the opportunity to work with my people in the EB, and they're willing to do it for the fourteen, and it's a true monthly savings.
So I, if possible, and if you're okay with it too, I would, I'd like to have just a little more time to make those phone calls.
That's what I was getting ready to say also, there's a couple people I was gonna get ahold of and talk to, and I was kinda like you guys, I was busy, uh, here towards the end of the week, and then I was gonna, very interested in what Nathan was gonna have to say, and then his flights got delayed last night, that's why he's not here today. Uh, so I'd like to just table this till we, uh.
The, the broker side.
The broker side, that's correct.
Yeah. There, we got your information?
Yeah, we got your information, so I'll make them.
Cause this doesn't need to be done today, right? This isn't like a pressing thing, you have to do it today, right? That's a yes, but you'd rather not, I get it, yeah, I get it, I get it.
I'll make a motion to we table, uh, the preview of the brokers.
Yeah, yeah, I make that motion, um, so moved.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes two zero.
You want to back on next month?
Yeah, just put it on, yeah, like next meeting. At the twenty, next month, the twenty-sixth.
Yeah, Nathan won't be with either of us.
Twenty-sixth, I'll do it a month, a month from this one.
Thirty, thirty days.
Okay. There you go.
And if we have to have a special meeting, I mean.
Yeah, we can, yeah.
Only because we're running on a timeframe where the renewal's coming up, it'd be great to do it close to the renewal time. We can always do it midterm, don't get me wrong, but just.
Sure.
Uh, the sooner the opportunity, the better. Then there was a question, um, about running a RFP for the PBM, I know I'm using terminology's here, but basically it's comparison, and if you go back to that first page, PBMs is one of the, uh, sections of the health insurance.
Right.
And a question about coming up, doing a comparison, I'll use that word versus RFP. And it was a question about MJ doing the comparison. I would like to recommend either Aquisher do it, and it can get no charge to the county. This is gonna sound a little biased on the PBM, we have TRX, and that is my brother, so I mean, uh, you know, I enjoy working with him, obviously, but I received no compensation, I received no compensation from the PBM, zero. So the only thing I lose, we lose TRX's Christmas dinner. So, but MJ has almost no business with TRX. MJ has a lot of business with True Scripts, and that's okay, you know, they all work with, with different PBMs. Aquisher does business with both companies, I would say fairly equal. Um, Aquisher does a lot with True Scripts, does a lot with TRX, and they also have, uh, a lot of other PBMs. And I'd really like to get with Nathan on this, so I, I guess I'm asking for a table on this as well, to see if they're wanting a comparison between those two companies, but Aquisher represents another six or seven PBMs? Are we, are we wanting to do that comparison over eight PBMs? And I was talking to Tracy and TC, and he was saying one of them, you know, True Scripts is one of their, well, you know, we don't necessarily want to do business. Uh, we don't know who we want to do business with, but with the comparisons, we can pick and choose maybe, okay, this company's doing this, TRX or True Scripts, can you do that?
So if it's at no cost, why can't both MJ and Aquisher do the comparison, and then we see if we had a bias or not?
Well.
Right? The hesitancy is weird, what, what's the hesitancy for?
Um, I don't know if they both would do that, um, knowing, because they're just a recommending company. You know, MJ's just gonna recommend the company, Aquisher's just gonna recommend the company, and.
So why wouldn't they both do it?
Okay, we'll, we'll say, we'll ask both of them to do it, and you get those comparisons, and then.
It would be interesting, cause it, it would, it would, it would help to see if there was a bias anywhere, right? And we, I don't want a bias, I want facts, that's what I want, I want, I don't care who's the best, I just want to see it, right?
Right.
Um, uh, obviously, I, I think when we talk on phones, like, well, there, there's a particular company, it's a large nationwide company that had a decent lawsuit, I probably have no interest in ever going to them at all, right?
Right.
Um, by the way, not local, this is a national company, just so we're clear, I don't want that being said. Um, I have no interest in moving to that particular one, right, so we could leave that one out pretty much.
We'll take what they show, and then that's how we compare with what everybody else is doing.
We want to make sure everybody's being, being fair, equal, and we want to get this, uh, right, um, for our employees, all that. We want to make sure we're doing the right thing.
So then we have permission.
If it's possible, I think we do both.
Okay.
Um, Grant, I don't think you have a, uh, issue with that, right?
Um, I, I don't.
As long as, as long as it's possible, right?
Yeah, I, I don't, uh, I mean, if, if you're, you're tabling thought process, and you're asking for something that doesn't cost anything, you know, more information's probably better, so.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to table the PBM, uh, till we get some.
Comparison.
Comparisons.
Right, I will, I'll make that motion.
Well, can I add to, to allow both MJ and Aquisher the information? Because right now MJ's been given the permission to do it, I just want to make sure Aquisher's given the permission as well, too.
I don't mind granting them permission if it doesn't cost anything, I don't mind not tabling it.
No, it don't cost anything, I like to see.
So I'll actually make a motion to allow, cause we've already allowed MJ, I'd like to make a motion to allow Aquisher at no cost, um, to, to do a comparison, um, of PBMs for the county.
Okay, uh, motion by TC, I will second that. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion passes two zero.
Doing a lot of work for no money here, anyway.
Oh, we pay you.
I know, I know.
Come on, don't.
The last thing is a very simple thing, is we are putting on the health fair again this year, and I just need, um, we've coordinated it, it's always complicated between coordinating with, um, the health department, the hospital, where we're gonna go, and so we have finally established that, and we're gonna go back out to the.
Conservation Club?
Thank you. We're going back out to the conservation club, and, um, you know, we'll see what next year brings. That was the only facility available that coordinated with the health department here and the hospital and, and all that. We do have in a pass allow the employees to come out there on their time, so that's why I need permission, uh, that the employees can come out to our health fair, it is gonna be held Septem, Wednesday, September twenty-fourth. We've already established a date, and it's, we need permission to allow the employees to come out there during company time.
I'll make a motion to allow employees to go to the, the county health fair, um, on September twenty-fourth.
Motion by Commissioner Cook, I will second, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion passes two zero.
Perfect. Hey, thanks, Paul, appreciate it.
Thanks. Well, we had to share the partner last, but they both got phone calls, so I'm not sure.
I'll talk to, I'll talk about that just briefly, I know Gary would like to get those done.
Yeah, he's been.
Had a conversation. Had a conversation with the Diamond Pharmacy attorney maybe two weeks ago, and he was comfortable with what I was suggesting. Quite a bit more, just time to try to track down QCC. Um, they have the, they have the language that we would like, and just so we're clear on, on what we're asking for. If we have a accident or death injury at the jail, and it relates to the healthcare. Uh, we have to have language that, um, county will be indemnified, the losses caused by, um, those actions. Unless the county has made a mistake, and because we're essentially hands-off as it relates to that.
That protects.
Yeah, so that's the language that we want.
Yeah, absolutely.
Diamond is comfortable with it, still waiting to hear back from QCC. Otherwise, I don't have a lot of things that I need changed in the document, but we do have, I mean, we've had litigation in the past. We were successful in that litigation, but if.
Because of language.
Yeah, yeah, so we just need to make sure we've got.
We have to wait for QCC to approve this, right, or be okay with it, then we can move forward and sign off, is that right?
Yeah, I mean, if, if you guys have looked at the terms, you know, and the sheriff is comfortable with the, um, the numbers.
Mm-hmm.
Fine, um, but I'm, I'm insistent that we have language that is acceptable.
And the language that is in that now is not acceptable, is that right? You need to get some more.
We could, it's, it's currently in QCC's court as to whether or not they will accept the language that we've proposed. And so we've just been waiting to hear back if our language is acceptable.
Where's Gary?
There's Gary.
Yeah, yeah. You wanna talk about the contracts briefly? So, I've talked a, a little bit about it, I know that we want to get those done. Um, we've proposed some language to QCC about indemnification. And, um, it's acceptable to Diamond, but we haven't yet heard back from QCC, but.
I talked to Diamond, he said it didn't matter to him, he could quit us in thirty days too, so it didn't really affect him any. Uh, I just need to get this done.
So once QCC approves it, the language, then we are, we're at the finish line.
You know, I had trouble getting money out of council for inmate needs, and this delay's already cost me more than that than I was asking, so. Especially on the pharmaceutical side. But I need to get it done, so however we get it done, we get it done.
You wanna proceed with Diamond then, and, and see what, how QCC responds, or?
Sure.
Look for a motion to approve the Diamond Pharmacy, as long as the language, is that what I want to say?
You're good with Diamond.
I'm good with Diamond, I'm good, I'm good with it, the way it was written to begin with, so.
We want to make sure you guys are protected, that's the big thing, that's the biggest thing. Yeah, so, and that's why we have a county attorney to help with that, so. Um, I would make a motion then to proceed with, with Diamond Pharmacy on that.
As long as the language is correct.
They've accepted.
They've accepted our proposal, we're just waiting to hear back from QCC.
I'll make a motion to proceed with Diamond Pharmacy.
Uh, motion by TC, I will second, and all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes two zero.
On, on QCC, as soon as I hear back, um, I mean, I'll, I'm willing to, to bring it to the commissioners and then. And have it approved at the next meeting, if that's acceptable. Um, so maybe a, once we hear back from them, um, do we have tentative approval to proceed in that manner?
Yes, I will make a motion to have approval once we hear back from QCC if they have approved our terms, our language.
Motion from TC, I will second, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion passes two zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gary. Next, we got the courthouse, open house.
What a day.
What a day, yep, I bet you some of these guys ain't thought this would ever get here. Looks like, uh, September the sixteenth, it's on a Tuesday, there'll be a ribbon, ribbon cutting ceremony. Uh, at the foyer at three PM. Uh, then, uh, you, everybody, I think the public can tour the offices until four-thirty. So it's like you're gonna have about an hour and a half to go through the courthouse, go through all the offices. Uh, I've been lucky enough to got to go through it, has its being built, you know, being redone. Uh, quite a different look in there, it looks modern, it looks great in there.
Yeah, so we want to make everybody wear that, hopefully, everybody's invited.
I'm sure Darwin will have it on the radio and all that, it'll be a.
Past commissioners are invited, council, all that, so it was a, it was a big effort for us to come in and just kinda watch it work, right?
Yeah, it was.
Um, we didn't do much.
No, we just got, got to watch it all happen, pretty much, take the glory maybe for it.
Yeah, yeah, I guess so, I guess so.
The glory.
We take it where we can get it, right?
I say glory, it's not, yeah, we better just wait on that, it may not be all glory, but, and I expect there's gonna be a few things that.
Sure.
That's gonna happen.
But they've done, everybody's done a great job, the staff here are, uh, has done a great job helping move, um, and then the contractors. It, it's all went pretty smooth.
It's went real good, yeah, on time, on budget, which is the biggest thing, everything's all on budget. All right, next thing is, uh, talk about our meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Times, uh, we used to start at nine AM, and then when we started changing places with the courthouse and all that. We had to, we had to start a little bit earlier. Um, I liked the earlier ones, but it, I mean, forty-five minutes ain't gonna make any difference to me, I know the girls. It, it makes them come in a little bit earlier and.
Well, and Grant can't shave, because it's too, it's too. Yeah, yeah, so.
Nah, just kidding, but yeah, I, uh, I'd say moving back to our original time, nine AM, and, uh.
So, starting in, starting in August, the first meeting in August will be at nine AM, nine AM. That's gonna be hard for me to get used to already.
I will look for a motion to, for the new, au- in August, the meetings will start at nine AM. Here at same place.
Yeah.
Here in the commissioner's room.
I will make that motion to switch meetings first in August to nine AM.
I will second, those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Passes two zero, I guess I needed a motion, did it?
Yeah, why not? We motioned everything.
Yeah, so, um, is that next meeting then on the twelfth of August?
The twelfth, I said, I.
Yep.
Okay.
First meeting in August, I think is what I meant, not first, but you're.
They'll say they're ready for that, cause the courts are over there, I guess we're for sure good for that, okay. All right, sounds good. And that will probably move our highway meetings to. Then, I, I really agree, cause we don't have enough time, I mean. Yeah.
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty, that'd give us a.
Seven forty-five.
A full hour.
If we got a full hour, it would be good.
Yeah, I agree with that, we'll, we'll talk about that too, okay?
One thing I did want to update you guys on, um, supposed to have another conversation with REO. I would like to know on the, the remaining detail, if we've got the amount that we want relative to bonds. So, we've agreed to forbear for thirty days, and that'll be done here in ten days.
Right.
So, we need to know, I mean, we essentially have ten days to know.
Really good at coming in the last day, last, last minute.
Yeah, um, to, to their credit, they told me ahead of time that they could meet the request relative to the additional amount. And they were, it's in part out of their control relative to bonds, so.
Okay, you'll have an, we'll have a, an update in the next meeting.
And if we need to have, you know, a meeting or an executive session or something, we can, we can do that.
The only thing else I want to add is, uh, probably gonna be mad at me for doing this, but. Rich has been with the county garage for, how many years, Rich? Ten years. He's, uh. Days, his last day, I believe, I believe he's got one more day though after this, uh, he's moving on to another job, better job. Sounds great, and I, I wish him the best of everything, he's been a good employee for the county. Um, I've always, I've known Rich for a while and kinda miss, kinda know that guy that you can just call anytime, you know? But, uh, that's all right, I'll, they still call him on, for some information every once in a while, but county appreciates, appreciates you and. I'd like to say I hope to see you back sometime or another, but I do wish you the best. He's, I know he's helped Chris a lot and took care of a lot of, a lot of headaches for the county, so we appreciate you. And good luck, good luck with everything.
Thanks for all you've done, you, you really worked hard for us, we really appreciate that.
Uh, next up, I'll look for a motion for payroll and claims.
I will make that motion.
I will second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes two zero. Thanks, everybody. Motion adjourned.
Sorry, yes, I'm sorry. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Yeah.